Council, November 18th, meeting open session. Mr. Kurt, would you lead us to the occasion?
If you would, join me in prayer. Lord God, we come to you this evening. Lord, the word diversified comes to mind that we live in a community that is diversified, and I thank you for that, God. I also ask you to be with us as leaders and councilmen of the city that, Lord, whatever decisions we make, that we study to it, we pray over it, and we make the best decision possible. God also be with our citizens. God is, we battle still through this pandemic, that, Lord, you just be with those families that have lost loved ones, and, Lord, that we do the best we can to overcome this pandemic. And God, we give you praise and glory in all situations, and we ask this in your name, in the name of Jesus, amen.
Mr. Wilson, will you lead us to the question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to be opening a public hearing regarding annexation of certain properties along Tweeburg Road. Is there any comments from the citizens? Is there any comment from the council? No comments appearing, we close the open session.
Mayor?
Yes.
What does the description "certain properties" mean?
Well, may I have that?
So, the certain properties were discussed in planning and zoning during the annexation request. They are basically what you will know as the Lurcher property and the Nelson property. Those are the two properties. Good enough?
Thank you.
Thank you. Citizens' comment, do we have any citizens' comment? Sir, come up and name and your address, please.
Sure. Derek States, nice to meet you all. I'm up on Firehouse Drive, 198 Firehouse Drive, so your address is up here. Well, it's my pleasure to meet with you this evening, and I want to thank you for giving me that sunshine report. Regarding the sunshine report, there are some deficiencies, one being the city's documents showing the plans and schedules to start the lift station and the lagoon closure, and secondly, the contract between the city of Waynesville and the Pulaski Sewer District when they, when you took over the lagoons there. Regarding economic development, a truck stop company has already gotten back to me regarding that commercial front property section there. My concerns, the sewage, all the other utilities are already there, it's sustainable, so that's just an issue, I want to find out more about the lagoon situation. Regarding the grant I had conversations on, apparently I can't co-op with you on that because I'm a private citizen, and that's only business or government, the government from what I understand, unless you find out something different on that. I'm happy to do it if I can, but from what they're telling me, I'm not allowed to. Regarding the development plans for the property, I've met with the engineers for developments, which I will begin immediately following the lift station and the lagoon closure commencement with the schedules and timelines for the lift station beginning in terms of construction, and then knowing the project closure date of the lagoons. Look forward to getting the missing documents that I mentioned with the contract that I mentioned, I think it was 2016 that was signed. This includes getting the detailed lift station and lagoon closure plans, which I haven't seen the actual plans for that. Currently, as I've talked with John, we're cooperating, no problems here. We're doing step one, which I agree with you on that, I think things are going well with that, we've had some good meetings with different calls and meetings with councilmen and members, I appreciate the time you've given me there, I do. But the process for me really starts when the boots are on the ground, digging dirt and doing stuff, so that's when I'll have a big smile on my face, of course. It is, my desires, we discussed, was sever to have the back forty removed from the city of Vacca County, the commercial front, it remain commercial property within the city limits. If the city doesn't want the commercial property, then it would be a total of 53-plus acres, so that's kind of an optional plan there. And we also talked about that it was more land needed for the commercial, I could put in another four, but that's the lagoon area, so that one's kind of time-sensitive there. All these items I'm talking about are time-sensitive, for ability, they're based on the city's proactive response to the lift station installation and the lagoon closure, so. And in terms of getting a response, I'd like to have a response before everybody takes off for the holidays, which would be, I think you're off Thursday, just some kind of a response in the letter that I sent previously. And speaking of holidays, I hope you all have a safe and happy and loving get-together with your families and your loved ones for the holidays here.
And expensive Thanksgiving, the most expensive one ever been recorded.
Yeah. You guys have any questions for me at all?
I've got one for you, sir. Did the bank that you purchased the properties, did they provide you with very much documentation?
I have their documents, I have the DNR documents, I have yours, and I have Pulaski County, so over 600 documents I've got there.
So what's missing?
Pardon?
What's the documents that are missing?
On your part, it's the document on the contract between you and Pulaski Sewer District when you took over the sewage treatment back in, I think it was 2016.
Do you know anything about that, John?
I don't, for sure. There would probably be a letter, more likely from the sewer district to the city, be more like a first write refusal letter, something like that, which we can, we can look at, research.
No other questions?
That's all I need.
All right, thanks, Kurt.
If there's any time that perhaps you, John, your engineers, or whoever's working with you, so we can all know we're in the right direction, what you want, what we can provide, what Vacca County can provide.
I'm available, I can tell you that the engineering reports and documentation from Pulaski, they were supposed to provide that to you from their contract, from what I've read in the contract, right? And then you had agreements you had made with them, but I'm happy to meet with you, obviously, anytime, except for the holiday weekend, I've been gone the whole weekend.
Okay. Do you have engineer plans?
There are plans that have been drawn up, but the problem stands right now with the separation of the city to the county issue, so I've met with the engineers, and I'm not going to draw up any plans until I know what my stance is, but we wouldn't do more than 60 homes in there, is what we've written.
Well, we'd have to have engineer plans before we could build our lift station.
You have those plans already, the city has those, they were drawn up previously.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all been done, they've been approved, funds are there for the lift station, from what I've been told.
I don't believe we have plans.
I don't know that we have plans for you there.
There's an engineer report, there was documentation for the lift station, and mentioned where it was going to be and everything, like we had on our call, I think it is, it did say the northeast section, I think, of the property you were talking about.
Okay, I will review that. Were these plans, do you know the date of these plans?
I don't have them off the top of my head, but I know Pulaski Sewer District, with your agreement, that contract I'm talking about has that information, and they were supposed to provide that to you.
They had those plans, okay.
I don't know if they have one, that was the contract you had with them. From what I've seen, there's been lots of conversation, and I know there's, I've got five engineering reports on the property, which, I know the city has the ones I'm talking of right now, the engineering.
Have you completed an engineering report yourself?
I'm not, I've met with several engineers, and because of the issue of whether it's going to be in Waynesville City or Pulaski County, that varies how I'm going to develop it, so I need that answer so I can get those done. I'm kind of like stuck in the middle till I get something going.
Well, it sounds like we're in a catch-22, because the city has to have your plans before we can move forward with our.
Well, this has nothing to do with my plans, the lift station's already been approved, that's got nothing to do with what I'm going to do on the property, others could be less, no more than 60 homes, and I think your plans were for, one of the plans set up to 96 homes, and the other one's around 60-some homes, so mine's less than that, so those plans that are already with the city, you guys have those previous plans.
But that comes from the sewer district, is what you're saying?
Sewer District has plans for the lift station information.
Do you have plans for your property, is what I'm asking, do you have an engineer that's drawn out your?
And the same conversation comes from him, until it decided if it, because there's different requirements for city development versus county development, so.
In Ruben Roads, in roads, and we don't have any utility.
Well, it's curbs, gutters, sewers, water retention.
Right.
So, if it's county, I'm not going to have most of that stuff happening on the county property, which changes the demerit, how I'm going to develop that property out.
But what I don't understand, if we put the lift station and it happens to fall on your property, or falling.
It will be on the property according to the plans I've already heard, and I'm fine with that, and I've told John, go ahead, do it, whatever you need me to sign for where you want to put it, do it, it's fine. It's going to be on the lowest portion of the property, it's in a Ruben area, it doesn't matter, there's not going to be a house in a Ruben, so it's not a problem where you put it.
Well, then we need to set down three or four.
And if we put in the lift station and you put in the line, and everything's connected up, you're not going to come back six months later and say, well, I'll build something on that spot.
Not going to happen, I'm not building in the dead.
That's what he's been so far in, right ways.
It's the lowest portion of the property, and I thought it was on the southeast, John said it was on the northwest, or the, or southeast, but it was one of those two corners, and it's stipulated in the contract you had with Pulaski Sewer District, so that's already been decided.
I keep hearing you say that contract, I don't know that we, have we seen that down in the council?
I don't know. I mean, some council has, apparently, I'm not sure the date of it.
Is it your previous mayor?
Okay, we'll have to find that.
Yeah, I've already met with Pulaski with their.
And it's a contract between the sewer district and the city?
And the city, that's correct, yeah.
Bill, do you know, have you seen?
I haven't seen the contract, I don't want to say because I gave you wrong information.
Okay, but I've met with their lawyers, their trustee, board of trustees, the chairman, and we've gone through all that documentation, or I have, that is like 540 pages just from Pulaski County.
When you say "we," you're talking sewer district? The lawyers with the sewer district, or?
Yeah, the lawyer with the sewer district, yeah, not mine.
Okay.
Could you talk to Terrence Cates?
You know what, I was going to talk to you about this one I put in my pocket, but yeah, I washed it in the laundry, could I get that again for you? I'm not kidding you.
Terrence Cates?
Cates, C-A-T-E-S?
C-A-T-E-S.
Okay, I get that, thank you. Is it?
Anything else from the council? Thank you for your information.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda, I'd like to have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Wilson, first, Mr. Rice, seconded, roll call, please.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Corrin?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I got this out of, out of whack here, that should have been before the citizen comment.
That's fine. Hey, Mayor, could we vote on the annexation? We've opened the public hearing and closed it.
I thought that was further down in the.
It was the approval, is it on there?
I think it's further down.
I see it, okay.
Okay. All right, special guests, presentation, business spotlight, the Blue Bee, and those from Ward One, please join me in front. Hey, we'll get you in the building. Councilman? Certificate of appreciation presented to the Blue Bee. On behalf of the city of Waynesville, we are honored to have you choose to come to and make Waynesville your home. Because of your dedication and determination, your business has been recognized as the business spotlight for November 21. Need a picture, too?
Yeah.
Do you have any comments about your business, please?
So, we're the Blue Bee, we are located on the square in Rubidoo Plaza, on, in Waynesville, on 115 Benton Avenue, I think street, sorry, a little nervous. And we are a creative center, and what our purpose is, is for people to come in and actually find a creative retreat, and they do that just through relaxation and creative projects, so we're.
Open to anybody?
Open to everyone, yeah.
County wine?
It is county wine, yeah, so we're just blessed to be here, really excited, and I'm looking forward to providing creativity for the Waynesville area.
Thank you, congratulations on this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, special guest, Dorsey Newcomb, please come forward, please.
Well, good evening, everyone. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for allowing me to come here tonight and just say thank you from the Sustainable Ozzos Partnership, for the support that you all provide to our organization, want to obviously thank you for your service to our city, spend a lot of time doing what you do, and we certainly appreciate that, but just wanted to kind of, I have an acrylic award here that we normally present at our annual meeting, which is under normal circumstances, in person. We had it planned for in-person, and we went virtual at the last minute, so we're going around, you all will be the first one from the cities and counties that we presented to, but want to take just a minute to do that tonight and let you know that we certainly appreciate what you all do, and I just wanted to, I left you a couple of documents there on your places there. One is kind of a marketing piece that we created, it's a community, you know, we represent what we describe as the Fort Leonardwood region, so the four counties around Fort Leonardwood, but we created a quality of life, kind of a community infographic, on the backside of it, we worked with Fort Leonardwood to put together the things that highlight the installation itself. So when we go and meet with senior leaders, Department of Defense and other places, we want to be able to show them something that is representative of the quality of community we have, and talk to them about the attributes of our installation. And so the second document I gave you was a simple Word document, front and back, that has upfront, there's three paragraphs that kind of remind you of what our organization is all about, and then we went and identified 10 of the things that we can tell you that we've accomplished since we last provided you an update, and then on the backside of that, we have 10 focus areas that we'll look forward to continue working on going forward. So I'll just take just a minute or two to highlight a few of those, you certainly can read those for yourself, obviously, but you know that we operate on a strategic plan that's formally approved by our board of directors, and so we updated that recently. We held our annual meeting that I talked about, and our speakers included Senators Blunt and Hawley, and Representative Hartsler, and we had our governor, we had our deputy to our commanding general, and we had our military advocate there, so again, just a great showing of support for our organization and what we're trying to do collectively. One of the major undertakings that we have embarked on in recent months is conducting virtual and in-person meetings with senior uniform and civilian Department of Defense leaders. We've met some at Fort Leonardwood, we've met some virtually, we've met some in Washington, DC, we've met some in San Antonio, Texas, and I've provided you just, you know, a handful of names to kind of show you the level of folks that we're engaging for, engaging with, advocating for our community and advocating for the future of Fort Leonardwood. A highlight here was certainly the Vice Chief of Staff of the Army, where I had a chance to sit down and engage him directly for 40 minutes about our great community and our great installation, and at the end of that, the feedback that he provided to us was, you all are doing exactly what you should be doing, advocating for your community and your installation, and you're doing it exactly the way that you should be doing. So for the Vice Chief of Staff of the Army, the number-two four-star general in the whole Army to say that, and for us to be able to raise the profile of our communities and our installation is something that we're really proud to be able to do, but we're able to do it because of support from folks like yourselves in doing so. We all know about our jet service at our airport now, we also know that we've seen the incremental funding for the hospital project continue, we've got one more incremental funding, so that that project will be finished in a couple of years, that's obviously has a lot of implications for our community in Fort Leonardwood going forward. We're continuing to advocate for additional military construction and physical improvements at our airport, we know that we need some funding for that, and we're really involved in trying to make that happen. We're interested in some reinvestment funding for the privatized housing on the installation to continue to do the things that the contractor or the privatized housing partner there is responsible for doing, and we're wanting to continue to advocate for our installation to be selected as a 5G prototype installation, that has a number of advantages, as you all know. We have been able to secure a state grant recently, again, one of the ways we're able to do that, because this grant has a 100% match, we're able to bring the funds that the city has provided us in this past year to the table and achieve that match, so the contributions that the city makes is, you know, used efficiently, but it's also leveraged to, you know, get other funding to do other things as well. We have been working with our Army partners, as a matter of fact, today, we chaired a two-hour meeting with our garrison commander and about 30 other folks, which included Mayor Brown, talking about a number of mutually beneficial partnerships between our communities in Fort Leonardwood, but one of the things we've been helping them examine is the availability of mental health care off post for service members and their families, and also the availability of licensed childcare services as well. I've talked a little bit about to you in the past about transitioning service members, we're continuing to connect with businesses and other agencies and the Missouri Workforce Development, folks to try to help connect the dots for transitioning service members, as you'll remember, there are about 600 of those that exit the service every year from Fort Leonardwood, we want to retain as many of those as we can in our communities and in our state, so one of the ways we're able to do that is try to help find employers that are interested and tap them into that workforce. The last thing I'll mention to you is, we are, we have developed a military spouse employment needs assessment survey, we know that there are a number of military spouses in the area that we want to attract more opportunities for, we've rolled out a survey that we hope to execute here in the coming months, that will provide us the data that we need as we go in and try to attract those businesses. And then a handful of things that I've mentioned that we will continue to do going forward is advocate for improved quality of life, work on our offensive strategy, and remain defensively minded, at the same time, you know, we want to be proactive and try to pursue things that are possible, but we also know that it's likely in '23, the defense budget will change, and it could have some implications on the Army and Fort Leonardwood, so we want to pay attention to those types of things. We want to attract remote work opportunities for military spouses, we want to do another joint man use study, we did one about 12 years ago, that documents formally that there's relatively no encroachment around Fort Leonardwood, we need to update that so that we can continue to show that in our portfolio, that our installation has relatively no encroachment, and basically, I think we realize what that implies. We're going to do some more sustained engagements, we're going to go back into DC in the month of March and engage a different round of senior leaders and tell our story. We're going to continue to pursue the different types of partnerships that reduce operating costs at Fort Leonardwood and create efficiencies that are mutually beneficial for our cities and other public entities. We're going to continue working with our congressional delegation, our state legislators, our military advocate, our locally elected leaders to strengthen Fort Leonardwood in the region, and we're going to maintain consistent communication with our stakeholders and our Fort Leonardwood senior leaders, obviously, the network that we have and that we continue to foster is very important, and then we're going to continue to communicate our themes and our messaging consistently in every venue that we possibly can. So, those are some highlights, I wanted to kind of report back to you, we won't want to come just before you when we have it asked, but we want to recognize you for what you've done, and wanted to share with you some of our accomplishments and some of our focus areas, but I want everyone to know that anytime, any day, at any point, anyone has any questions about what we're doing, how we're doing it, or makes some suggestions about what we should be doing differently, or how we can do things better, we're certainly open, we describe our collective effort as involving everyone across the four-county region, and that certainly includes our locally elected city officials. So, with that, Mayor, I'd like to bestow this critical.
I want to make one quick comment.
Yes, sir.
You did a great job of compressing a two-hour presentation this afternoon to about 15 minutes.
Yes, sir. Well, you, well, you know how that happened, Mayor, you gave me a quick call and said, Dorsey, were you tired of talking for murder today? And I said, well, I go around too, he said, no, I want you to make it short, so I did, I did the best I could.
And this is kept on behalf of the complete city council and city staff and the city of Waynesville. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it, you're welcome, thank you very much.
Okay, good to hear.
Thanks, John.
Okay, boards commissioned liaison reports, park boards, there was no meeting held. Planning and zoning, John, you can give that presentation.
Okay, so, planning and zoning, we had called the meeting order at 5:30, quorum was established, we had open public hearing rezoning requests, rezoning requested for a commercial property to a residential property off of F Highway, they closed the public hearing with no comments from citizens or the commission, and that was passed unanimously. We also considered a Phase One preliminary plat of pinnacle at the summit, recommendation of approval was contingent upon the Waynesville City Council approving annexation of property during the public hearing, to be, that was to be held this evening, November 18th, okay? Then a Phase One final plat of pinnacle at the summit, that recommendation was also based on the approval of the city council annexing the property into the city limits. Then there was a Phase Two preliminary plat of pinnacle at the summit, those plats were reviewed, Twilight Corridary entertained a motion for Phase Two, number seven and eight, Phase Two final, preliminary and final, those were approved, and then towards the end of the meeting, and if you're on that, on that board or committee, I would like to encourage you to continue to attend those, as those look to have very busy agendas coming up in January and extended beyond, so the meeting was adjourned at 5:37, and the next meeting is January 11th, and it has a very long agenda as well.
Thank you. All right, we have some ordinances and resolutions. Proposed ordinance, Bill 2021-48, reading, please.
First reading, Bill Number 2021-48, an ordinance extending limits of the city of Waynesville, fixing an effective date, 5.50 acres, more or less. Second reading, Bill Number 2021-48, an ordinance extending limits of the city of Waynesville, fixing an effective date, 5.50 acres, more or less.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion for this ordinance? Mr. Conley, second, Mr. Rice, roll call, please.
Councilman Corrin?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Sorry, Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution 2021-12, reading?
Resolution Number 2021-12, a resolution approving a preliminary plat of Phase 1A of pinnacle at the summit.
Do I have a discussion on this? Motion?
Motion.
Mr. Curtis? Mr. Conley will second it, roll call, please.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Corrin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Passes. Okay, Bill Number 2021-62, reading, please.
First reading, Bill Number 2021-62, an ordinance approving the final plat for Phase 1A of pinnacle at the summit, fixing an effective date. Second reading, Bill Number 2021-62, an ordinance approving the final plat for Phase 1A of pinnacle at the summit, fixing an effective date.
Any discussion from the council? Do I hear a motion? Mr. Corrin, second, Mr. Rice, roll call, please.
Councilman Corrin? Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proposed Resolution 2021-13, reading, please.
Resolution Number 2021-13, a resolution approving a preliminary plat of Phase 2 of pinnacle at the summit.
Discussion? Do I hear a motion? Mr. Conley?
Yeah.
Second. Amanda, roll call, please.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman. Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Connolly.
Yes.
Councilman Corn.
Yes.
Thank you.
Proposed Ordinance, House Bill Twenty Twenty-One dash six-three. Reading.
First reading, Bill Number Twenty Twenty-One dash six-three, an ordinance approving the final plat for Phase Two of Pinnacle at the Summit, fixing an effective date. Second reading, Bill Number Twenty Twenty-One dash six-three, an ordinance approving the final plat for Phase Two of Pinnacle at the Summit, fixing an effective date.
Any discussion from the council? Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Farnum? Mr. Wilson, second it. Roll call, please.
Councilman Corn.
Yes.
Councilman Connolly.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
Thank you.
Proposed Ordinance, or Proposed Bill Twenty Twenty-One dash six-four. Reading.
First reading, Bill Number Twenty Twenty-One dash six-four, an ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from C-one commercial to R-one, single-family residential, for property located at one-three-nine-zero State Route F in Waynesville, Missouri, fixing an effective date. Second reading, Bill Number Twenty Twenty-One dash six-four, an ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from C-one commercial to R-one, single-family residential, for property located at one-three-nine-zero State Route F in Waynesville, Missouri, fixing an effective date.
Any discussion?
I assume there's no business being conducted there at all.
It won't be after tonight.
Okay.
Do you want that? What you guys hope for. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Farnum?
Second.
Mr. Curtis? Roll call, please.
Councilman Curtis? Sorry, Councilman Corn? Sorry.
Don't insult her.
You were talking, and I heard, my brain, sorry, sorry.
You're fine.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yeah.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Passes. Standing Committee Report. Utilities. Councilman Connolly, please.
Okay, the Utility Committee met at three-thirty. What day? I couldn't say. Should remember that, it was my baby brother's birthday. We had the usual crowd there, full house, had three visitors, Randy Brown, Keith Pritchard, and a gentleman from Talk Engineering, whose name I will not try to pronounce. Individual from Talk discussed the rate study for the current sewer and wastewater treatment facilities, and he came up, or his company came up with the conclusion that we're, that what we're charging does not cover the cost. And so the committee is going to consider what to do about those rates in January. And we have a lot of options. Easy one being just raise the rates, let everybody holler. We won't do that. I never liked raising mine, so my own, never thought I'd be interested in raising my own. We looked at the twenty-twenty-two budget, the, by the works for lack of water and sewer and natural gas, we sent to committees for approval, to the council for approval. We discussed a ordinance, which is actually to do with solar farm, we're allowing the solar farm itself to be sold to Mudgemark. We're allowing them to buy the prop, the solar farm, but not the ground lease. We're selling the ground, the equipment itself, we sold to Mudgemark, and it's, nothing else will change. So change the sign on solar farm. We had the department updates. We had, the department had three power outages to deal with, four street lights, four trees, two miscellaneous, and three new electric services. They worked on the right-of-way clearing, cleaned up the trucks and equipment, worked, did a lot of work on the salt path, all that new, new substation, or new housing development, changed out a hole on Olive Street, set a new pole by the, over here was playground, did a lot of house cleaning, and in their place. Over the years, I can remember walking into that sewer plant, and you had a hole in there. And it smelled like a sewer plant. And people who work there now take a lot of pride, a lot more pride, I can say, than people have in the past, and they really done a really superb job cleaning it up. Mr. York, stated his department, short staff due to illness, they turned back to normal. They replaced a riser at the nine-one-one center on the sidewalk, and they began installing natural gas in the Pinnacle subdivision. Other business, we talked about the utility relief program, which will provide assistance to people who are having problems paying their utility bills due to COVID. And we, there's also a home and energy efficiency program, which basically will help low-to-revenue-income households that have been affected by COVID to winterize their houses. And we also had a, I didn't show it to you, that wasn't your joke, just, had a closed session, came out, went in at four-thirty-two, came out at five-oh-one, and we're now in June until January the fourth of twenty-twenty-two.
And there is an ordinance coming out of that committee? Bill Number Twenty Twenty-One dash five-eight. Reading, please.
First reading, Bill Number Twenty Twenty-One dash five-eight, an ordinance authorizing and approving assignment and assumption of interconnection and operating agreement related to solar farm. Second reading, Bill Number Twenty Twenty-One dash five-eight, an ordinance authorizing and approving assignment and assumption of air connection and operating agreement related to solar farm.
Any discussion from the council? Well, not yet. I have a question, John.
Go ahead.
They assumed the solar farm. That means towards the end of its life, they are responsible for disposing of all that unit out there. We, we have the land, but that is their product.
So it's, it is essentially the same agreement that the city entered into with MCP Waynesville or MC Power Waynesville and Garner Solar Developments? That was the original agreement. Those two entities operated and maintained the solar farm while the city owned the property. And now we're going to change the name from MCP Waynesville and Garner Solar Development to Mudgemuck, which is a MPUA. And...
And we're partners of that.
That's correct. This is definitely an MPUA city we're very active in. So the only uniqueness that I've seen, MPUA has purchased several of these across the state, and it was a planned purchase. It's not something that just come up, oh, here's an opportunity. These were planned purchases as they were developed, and, and twenty-twenty-two is Waynesville's year, and, and the uniqueness for Waynesville was we actually do own the property. Now, there are some other ones like that in this pool, in our power pool, at MPUA, but not, it's more, I'm going to say probably more rare that, that the city owns the property than, than not. But either way, it works, Mudgemuck will be the owner, and they will be responsible. Their, their ideas are to, you know, upgrade these, and as they purchase them, staged, these upgrades will be staged as well.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Does a solar farm, does it make much electricity? Does it generate much electricity?
It does. Solar, solar energy is, is unique. It is a green energy. It is a green source of energy. It can encourage development within the community by, if somebody is a large user, there are companies out there, if you look at like a Bitcoin company or something like that, they're looking to market these green energies because they, they use a lot of resources in the electrical field. So that could encourage those types of companies who do this to Waynesville, because then they are able to utilize our solar farm and market the green energy credits that we get from that farm for their business. There's actually a online resource to track the energy that the solar farm creates. The difficulty with the farm is, is it is use or lose, really. It's, it, there's no storage, so it's not a battery storage. There's no storage to store the energy when it's mostly needed. So through the day in the wintertime, you know, you may not be at your peak load, your peak load will be at night when it really gets cold, or right before morning, as people start to get up and, and kick the heaters on and start, you know, taking showers, and that's when your load is, and your solar farm at that point is not producing any energy because the sun's not quite up yet. And I can get you that website, and, and I get on it a lot just to, just to look, to see the, the differences in the power that it supplies back to our grid from a cloudy day to a sunny day, it's kind of neat.
Ed, you still want to make a motion?
I didn't make that motion.
Second, please.
I second.
Mr. Wilson? Roll call, please.
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Connolly.
Yes.
Councilman Corn.
Yes.
Thank you.
It passes. Finance, Humans, Resources Committee, Councilman Corn.
Yeah, so we had our meeting called to order. We did our usual, paid our bills. We did request an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget to be prepared for City Council to allow early payoffs of some of our lease agreements. The purpose of the early payoffs is to free up room in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget entering into new lease agreements to match the requirements if the city has granted the funds for the Volkswagen grant program. We reviewed the final budget and forwarded it to City Council for final approval as well. We reviewed the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two CID budget and reviewed funds in the amount of thirty thousand dollars paid to the city as a twenty-twenty-one debt retirement on the current CID projects the city has completed. We discussed the twenty-twenty-two personnel manning chart and reviewed the twenty-twenty-two step and grade chart that will be used for hiring and promotion purposes going forward, and had a discussion on the merit-based staff devaluation process that's currently happening through the city. The committee forwarded an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute all documentation necessary to join the Marma Health to City Council for final approval. And the committee reviewed the letter that was sent to terminate the contract with Waynesville Rural Fire Department effective December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. The committee had an intergovernmental agreement that would establish fire protection services with the City of St. Robert, and the agreement's for forty-five percent of the bill, real estate and property taxes for the city limits of Waynesville not to be less than two-hundred and four thousand dollars annually. The mayor was given the authority to sign the final agreement by City Council via ordinance in October of twenty-twenty-one. The nine-one-one county contract was reviewed, the annual cost notice from Palasque County nine-one-one board. The cost for the city will be eight thousand, three hundred and five dollars and thirty-eight cents, an increase of two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. The committee forwarded an ordinance to enter into an updated agreement with the Palasque County nine-one-one board to the City Council for final approval. Currently, we have no December committee meeting scheduled. Happy holidays for that. We also reviewed current programs available to the citizens of Waynesville, so I recommend anybody that hasn't looked into those, please do. We have a utility relief program, the Build It Better program, and employee premium pay program for grocery and convenience stores located within the city limits of Waynesville. We did an inner closed session, came out, closed our meeting. Our next meeting will be January thirteenth at five p.m.
Any questions for Amanda? That was a mouthful.
It was, wasn't it?
All right, we have a proposed ordinance. Bill Number Twenty Twenty-One dash four-zero. Reading, please.
First reading, Bill Number Twenty Twenty-One dash four-zero, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute all documentation necessary to join Marma Health, approving the form of certain documents necessary to that end, fixing an effective date. Second reading, Bill Number Twenty Twenty-One dash four-zero, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute all documentation necessary to join Marma Health, approving the form of certain documents necessary to that end, fixing an effective date.
Any discussion on that? John, would you like to clarify a little more, or the council pretty well know what's going on?
Yeah, so some of the discussions during this review for, for health insurance to the employees by the city included better coverage, better policies. We, we were actually looking at extending policies now. The, the city has very, very good health insurance now, and we are very pleased with our providers, but we have expanded upon those to where we can include spouses, children. We are really focusing on the employees of, of the, the city, and we actually got a very good quote. It was unknown to us at the time we started this, which was several months ago, that Marma even provided health insurance. And when they provided the quotes to us, they are very comparable. I will say slightly less cost per employee than what we pay now. I think we are somewhere in the neighborhood of about seven-hundred and twenty dollars per employee now just for health insurance, and these come in around, you can see between six-hundred and seventeen to eight-hundred. Just so you know, and can kind of compare across the board, Plan Six is identical to the plan that the city offers its employees now and that we all carry, okay? Plan Five is a fairly significant upgrade with deductibles and coverage, okay? Primary care physicians are increased. And then Plan Zero is, is a great increase in, in coverage, okay? And just kind of to let you guys know where, where the city lies in health coverage per employee, again, it's about seven-hundred, seven-hundred and twenty bucks per, per employee. And you can see the prices of these plans.
Does this allow the employees a lot more flexibility on where they can go?
Really does. Some, some of the complaints that we heard early on were, and, and again, the, the coverage was great, the insurance, the provider was great, very good to work with, no complaints there from, from my, my standpoint. But when you get into specialists, there was a lot of out-of-network, and when you get to going out of network, you may actually drive by ten specialists to get to the one that they recommend. So we had, you know, we, we were sending people maybe, you know, all the way to Branson for something when they could have easily had Brawla, Lebman, and Springfield, you know, you're passing a lot of stuff, and, and this really accommodates that. More specialists would be involved in, in this network, and it's positive.
Do we have a motion? Amanda? Second. Mr. Rice? Roll call, please.
Councilman Corn. Councilman Connolly.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
Thank you.
It passes. Proposed Ordinance, Bill Twenty Twenty-One dash five-seven.
First reading, Bill Number Twenty Twenty-One dash five-seven, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two hiring and promotion salary schedule and personnel manning chart, repealing conflicting ordinances, fixing an effective date. Second reading, Bill Number Twenty Twenty-One dash seven, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two hiring and promotion salary schedule and personnel manning chart, repealing conflicting ordinances, fixing effectively.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion to accept this ordinance? Amanda, you're quick on the draw again. Ed, second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Connolly.
Yes.
Councilman Corn. Thank you.
That passes. Another proposed ordinance, Bill Twenty Twenty-One dash five-nine. Reading, please.
First reading... First reading, bill number 2021-59, an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2021 budget, repealing conflicting ordinances, fixing and effective date. Second reading, bill number 2021-59, an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2021 budget, repealing conflicting ordinances, fixing and effective date.
Discussion from the council? I hear a motion. Ed, Mr. Liberty seconds it. Roll call, please.
Councilman Corrin.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Corrin.
Yes.
Thank you.
That one passes. We have another ordinance, bill 2021-60. Reading.
First reading, bill number 2021-60, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2022 budget, fixing and effective date, repealing conflicting ordinances. Second reading, bill number 2021-60, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2021 budget, fixing and effective date, repealing conflicting ordinances.
Any discussion from the council?
Justin Mr. Doyle and his staff must have been busy.
Do I have a motion to accept this ordinance? Amanda, you're quick.
I'll second.
Mr. Wilson, roll call, please.
Councilman Corrin.
Yes.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes. Broke the grounds, there was no meeting. So Bill, you get off tonight.
Well, we showed up, except a couple of members were busy and couldn't attend, so we didn't have a call. So no meeting.
Sorry, I had to go.
Ah, it's all right. You're there.
Police committee, Councilman Wilson.
Okay, Emergency Services and Police Committee, the meeting took place on November 4th. There was a quorum. The two guests we had were Councilman Conley and Mayor Brown. There were no citizens' comments. The meeting minutes were approved. We covered the finance, the 2022 budget. That was approved and there was some discussion about us receiving or acquiring some more tasers for the police officers. Councilman Liberty had initiated that conversation with Chief Cordova and we all agreed that that's a great idea. Also, there was a request for an upgrade of their firearms because the ones they had were a little outdated and and we all agreed on that as well. So the budget was approved and pushed forward. As far as grant updates, Chief Cordova stated that all of the last 15-year grants were expended and in the last two weeks of December will be the holiday enforcement, DWI, grant cycle. Also, police department statistics, there was a request in our previous meeting that Chief Cordova would provide the statistical data of the police officers and the frequency of stops and citations and incidents. That was provided for us. We all agreed that quarterly requirement of that information is the only thing that we need going forward, so that will be provided. He did provide an entire year, month-to-month statistical documents for the information for the board or for the committee. Other business, the fire department, the final agreement. Mr. Doyle provided a proposed draft letter from the city of Waynesville to the rural fire department, giving a one-year advance written notice of non-renewal requirement by agreement. And Mr. Doyle also provided a contract between the city and the city of Waynesville and St. Robert for the fire protection services. There was a motion. It was approved to push that information forward, which we'll hear a little bit more about that. As far as our next item that was on the agenda was the 911 county contract, which you have already heard from Councilman, Councilwoman Corrin, so I won't repeat that. We had no further business. The meeting adjourned at 4:18 p.m. The next meeting will be January 13, 2022, at 3:30.
And we have two ordinances come out of that committee. Bill number 2021-45.
First reading, bill number 2021-45, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Robert for fire protection services, fixing and effective date. Second reading, bill number 2021-45, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Robert for fire protection services, fixing and effective date.
Thank you. Discussion on this. Anybody from the council?
I got questions. What is the reason we're switching from our current provider to possibly St. Robert with us?
So the reason would be comparable or equal level of service for a reduced cost.
You say reduced cost. How are you going to explain when you have to build a fire station to house the firefighters to be able to sleep, eat, and bathe plus the fire truck? We don't have them.
So the the fire protection services are going to be comparable. The fire truck is going to be provided by them. They're providing the firefighters. We're not manning the station ourselves. We're not going into the fire protection services ourselves. That's the part of the agreement that they're providing.
Right, but we're going to have to provide in the building the way I read the agreement.
We will have to provide a building that will house the truck, yes.
Right, and they're going to have firefighters that are probably going to stay there, so they'll have to have a bunk room, they'll have to have bathrooms with a shower and a kitchen.
Mm-hmm.
And the city of Lebanon just talked about building a new one and theirs is going to be $2.7 million.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if we're saving a little bit of money by switching to them, but we have to turn around and build a building that's going to cost us a million or two million bucks, where is the savings?
So the the building that they are interested in wanting to man is actually the old building department building. It is behind our current police station.
Down there in the flood zone.
That's that's the building they want.
On Olive Street? Is that the one you're referring to? You're talking about the one down there in the business area?
Talking about the one behind our current police station off of Route 66.
Will a fire truck fit inside that?
They they are confident that's the building they want.
I think it's going to end up costing the city in the long run by the type of building that's going to have to be provided. So you pretty well see that I'm not happy about it. We know that, John.
I know.
It's nothing personal against anyone.
I know that.
But I think it's a very bad decision for us.
Mm-hmm.
But I think we, in the short term, we're going to save some money by going with them until we have to pay to build the building and retrofit to one that's there, whatever. I think we're going to find it's it's going to be expensive.
Well, one of the good things about that, if we look at it that way, is we actually are building more infrastructure. That will be our building. It will be there, so since something's changed.
That property down there is in the flood zone, Doc.
The what?
That's a flood zone property down there.
So is the police department.
Yes, it is.
So your point is?
We get one of our big 100-year storms or whatever that could all be underwater?
It didn't last time.
But you remember, these people in the trade department here, they had to rescue people?
I'd say that.
I think it's a bad decision by the city.
Well, the money we're going to save will be the money that goes towards storm sirens and ability.
Or additional infrastructure for the city that we own. Any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Liberty, second, please.
I'll second.
Mr. Wilson, roll call, please.
Councilman Corrin.
Yes.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Farnum.
No.
Thank you.
Next proposed ordinance, bill number 2021-61.
First reading, bill number 2021-61, an ordinance approving the agreement between the city of Waynesville and the Pulaski County 911 Emergency Service Board for dispatching services, fixing and effective date. Second reading, bill number 2021-61, an ordinance approving an agreement between the city of Waynesville and the Pulaski County 911 Emergency Service Board for dispatching services, fixing and effective date.
We have any discussion from the council on this bill?
Yes, the issue I have is Exhibit A, State's Dispatch Agreement Agreement for Non-Emergency The police department deals with numerous emergencies, so are they saying that they're not going to dispatch for emergency? That's what this says.
No, I don't believe it says that.
It does. It says non-emergency dispatch.
Yeah, but they're required by law to provide emergency services.
That isn't what that says.
So I I will tell you that this agreement is identical to the agreement we just are renewing. It's no different than the agreement we've had since 2012. It reads the same. The only difference is cost. It went up about $3,000, the first increase since 2012 that I could find.
I wasn't on the council 2012. Had I been, I'd had that problem with it before.
Any other discussion? Do I hear a motion for this ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Conley, I hear you say you're second.
Second.
Mr. Curtis, roll call, please.
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Reluctantly, yes.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Corrin.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that passes. Economic Development and Governmental Affairs Committee, Councilman Farnum.
Uh, Councilman Rice.
Yes, uh, the meeting.
You can take it from here.
Oh. Uh, the November 3rd meeting was called to order at 5:00 p.m. There were no citizens' comments. The meetings from the October 14th meeting was approved, the minutes from the meeting. We discussed the 2022 final budget, which the worksheet was provided to the committee. There's an economic development line in the budget with $70,000 to help community organizations, future activities, memberships, and economic development programs. The CID budget was reviewed. The Westgate Community Improvement District budget was provided for review as well. The CID board meets biannually. Members are Mr. Doyle, Mayor Brown, Councilman Conley, Richard Hicks, and David McFarland. The financials are overseen by Mike Spikerman with Gilmore and Bell. The city has reimbursed once a year for the development of the Community Improvement District. In 2020, the city was reimbursed $50,000 and this year was $30,000. We discussed the Rubidoo Streetery. It's in the beginning stages of development and will kick off next spring. The Food Truck Court will tie into other future features that the city has planned. We discussed the Economic Development Coordinator, which is here tonight. Nice to meet you. He started up Monday, November 15th. The business spotlight for November was Blue Bee, and thank you for coming up. Then jumping to January 2022 is going to be Hope Dogs. The special events for November were Veterans Day Parade in St. Robert, which the mayor was in, saw you, got the pictures of you. And other business, the city received funding through the American Rescue Plan Act and has approved the following programs to offer assistance to citizens of Waynesville. These have been discussed a few times, but quickly, the employee premium pay program for grocery stores and convenience stores located within the city limits. The owner of the business must apply for employees. Checks will be written to employees up to $250 per employee, amount based on the length you worked through the pandemic. The rules are set by the government and must still be employed by the business. They also discussed the utility relief program. There's $100,000 being set aside for that program. It's a five-year program of $20,000 allotted each year. As well, the home energy efficiency improvement program that Councilman Conley discussed. The amount on that one is a $100,000 program. Homeowners within the city limits can apply for up to $2,000.
Would this be homeowners or rental people? With the rental owner or property owner's space that rented out, do they still have the option of going to that?
I don't know. I think so.
They do. All applications are reviewed by the ARPA team, which consists of two councilmen, Councilman Wilson and Councilman Farnum. And, you know, those reviews are up to $2,000 and, you know, they can be, it's not like if you have a project that you need done and maybe cannot afford, it doesn't have to cost 2,000. It's up too, so make sure you get your applications in for that.
That's a program that's great for people who may not know about it, so if you know anybody that needs help like that, that'd be a great program to help out with. Having no further business, the meeting was adjourned at 5:31 p.m. The next meeting is not scheduled until January 4, 2020, at 5:00 p.m.
Do you want to touch on the Christmas on the Square and the Christmas Parade or?
Christmas on the Square is what, the third or the first Thursday of December, correct? And what was the other one?
Christmas on the Square is the second.
Christmas Parade, I don't know. That that.
Christmas on the Square is on the second.
Okay.
And the parade is on the fifth.
Parade is on the fifth.
Thank you. I didn't mean to short you.
No, you're fine.
It said Farm on my list here.
Oh, I know. That was from last time when I missed.
Okay, we have Waynesville-St. Robert Joint Airport Board, Councilman Liberty.
Meeting was called to order at 3:00. Meeting minutes were approved. Staff reports, administration, budget was provided to the board, which reflects 83.3% in the year with expenses tracking at 87%. Randy Beck made a motion to approve the budget. Budget was approved. Airport operations manager advised fuel sales spreadsheet was provided to the board. SkyWest was fueled 18 times for the month of October. New business, Executive Order 14042. Chairman Lawrenson discussed the executive order. This order, which was passed by President Biden, requires contracted employees to have the COVID vaccine. SkyWest Airline update fuel sales. They require unleaded and diesel fuel for their ground crews. And at this time, we're moving forward on that to provide that. Baggage handling, covered carts, baggage carts do not have a top, and we're looking into purchasing those. Furniture, we discussed furniture for the waiting area, and those will be taken care of. SOP marketing report, Aaron Yonkin provided the board with marketing report. Optimization score is 83.4%. Focusing on keywords that are relevant to our airport has helped our score continue to climb. Top three pages visited on the website are the homepage, book of flight page, and traveling to Fort Lenawar page. Next meeting will be conducted Tuesday, November 23, 3:00 p.m. at St. Robert City Hall.
We have any other questions from Mr. Liberty regarding airport? We do have a proposed ordinance. Bill number 2021-65. Reading, please.
First reading, bill number 2021-65, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2456, authorizing the mayor of the city of Waynesville to execute a supplemental agreement for airport aid between the city of Waynesville, city of St. Robert, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, fixing and effective date. Second reading, bill number 2021-65, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2456, authorizing the mayor of the city of Waynesville to execute a supplemental agreement for airport aid between the city of Waynesville, city of St. Robert, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Committee Commission, fixing and effective date.
Any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Liberty, second, please.
Second.
Mr. Wilson, reading, please. I mean, roll call, please.
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Corrin.
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes. Other business. There you go, John, that's the one you were looking for.
So in other business, we do have a proposed resolution. It is a resolution appointing members to the CID or Community Improvement District. These members are existing members whose term has expired. These members are existing members whose term has expired, and they both agreed to be reappointed to that to that board. So, that's the resolution that we have for other business.
Resolution reading please.
Resolution number twenty twenty one dash one board, a resolution appointing certain members to the board of directors of the Westgate Community Improvement District, C I D, fixing an effective date.
Discussion? Motion? Amanda? Mr. Rice, roll call please.
Councilman Corn. Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Farnum.
Start.
Thank you.
City Administrator's report.
So, a lot of the information in this report we have already covered. There's a little more detail in there on some of it. The final budget, obviously, we've approved that tonight. We did make an amendment to the existing budget, and that was to basically, so you guys know, that's to pay off, not really C O Ps, but existing debt that is going to mature next year. We paid off this year, which kind of frees up some funds for next year in case we get selected for grants or matching grants. You have those funds available to match those grants. The Economic Development Coordinator is here tonight or was dug up right here. He actually started Monday, so it was his first day on the job, and he's hit the ground running. So, very pleased with that. We are going to be working hard to keep him busy and pretty excited to begin a new year with that position staff. Water and sewer utility rate study, which was discussed during our utility committee meeting. But something I will tell you is that these rate studies have been ongoing. We have completed the electric. We are now into the water and sewer, and we will finalize with natural gas. The electric rate study went okay. The water study went really well, and the sewer study was the worst yet. So, we're finding these rates to be kind of all over the board. The water rate was really spot on. We've done a good job. The sewer rate, it appeared to be very low. So, there's some tough decisions to make on that in the upcoming or subsequent utility meetings, and we will be discussing that if anybody has interest or wants to, you know, have some input as we move along with that. This isn't a decision that we will, you know, rush to make, but it is definitely something that we need to begin implementing as the new year is upon us. ARPA funding, probably one of the biggest things that we keyed on in the past is this ARPA team has worked very hard to get this money available to the people that it belongs to. And that is to the community, the citizens of this community, okay? We do have premium pay of essential workers with grocery, gas stations, and convenience stores. We have a utility bill relief program. We have energy efficiency home repairs grant funding. Get on our website, get on our Facebook, come to City Hall, call, ask questions. You guys need to utilize, the community needs to utilize these funds. That's who it's for. We are going now, these funds were, all of these programs were funded fully November fifteenth. We will begin running an ad on the radio station expressing how to apply for these, detailing out, you know, the process. It's very simple. It's very easy. Get these applications to this ARPA team so the community can take advantage of those funds. Solar farm contract agreement, we've discussed that in the upcoming events. I think the only one we left off really that wasn't advertised was the city of Waynesville Christmas party is currently scheduled for December twenty-third, of which we will be closing City Hall from twelve to two.
That's all I have. Rob, before we have council comments, you have a special announcement.
Well, on November twenty-third, which is a great day for a birthday. It's my birthday too. But back to the point, Lorraine Rigsby is going to turn a hundred years old. She's a longtime resident of Waynesville, has done a lot for the city, many, served on many boards, many committees. Just want to say happy birthday to her.
How about her special talent?
Special talent is pancake flipping contest. She's the winner of that one.
Council comments. Let's start with Amanda.
Rob stole my thunder.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to say happy birthday to Lorraine, so.
We all should say happy birthday.
And I actually have a card for everybody to sign, so I'm going to start passing that during council comments.
Should we sing happy birthday to her also?
We could.
We had all the employees that we thought of signing this as well, so.
I'm going to turn my mic off if we're all singing. So, my council comment, man, I usually have something that just pops off my head, but I was all about Lorraine's birthday. So, happy birthday, Lorraine.
He said you can read some of these, Rob, babe.
Oh, that's okay. So, I'm.
It's on the right.
He hit the top things.
I mean, this is the best thing, right?
She can do it. Thank you.
She's.
Oh, my goodness. Wow. So, she was a boy and girl scout leader, volunteered with the U S O, member of the order of the Eastern Star.
Seventy-five years.
Seventy-five years. Wow. United Methodist Women, Pulaski County Historical Society, Pulaski County Planters, Genealogy Society, Pulaski County Friends of the Library, Route sixty-six organization, Pulaski County Armed Services, Y M C A. She was the winner of Pulaski County Pancake Flipping Contest. I didn't even know that was a thing. I'm going to go practice that.
For your time, probably.
Yeah. Oh, you're saying they don't do it anymore? Commerce. Y M C A Civilian Volunteer Leader of the Year, co-authored the first volumes of the history of Pulaski County, Waynesville, Saint Robert's Chamber of Commerce, Citizen of the Year, nominated three times. That's amazing. So, Lorraine, thank you for being a wonderful citizen. That's kind of where my comment was going to head was everybody needs to get involved. I mean, we all sit up here and we all do this because we love our community. Surely, there are more of you out there that love your community. So, we ask that you come out, join us, maybe run for one of these seats, make a difference. You couldn't sit in a better council bill. And that's because the city of Waynesville staff make us all look good, make us all function well. We couldn't do it without them. So, happy holidays to everybody. Be safe. Watch the weather. I keep hearing it's a bad winter. So, if you're traveling over the holidays, be safe, and we will see you all in January.
I'm not used to speaking this early in the council comments. Usually, everybody has said everything good that can be said before everyone gets to me. But it's been an unusual year this year, but we have almost made it through. And one of the reasons we have almost made it through is because of the great staff we have. And it's Lorraine. John has done, in my humble opinion, a better job as city administrator than anybody that's been the administrator of the city for the last five.
Five years of five administrators.
Five administrators.
Only Ed can say that. I was going to say five years. That ain't doing much.
Well, missing five years is not bad. You'd only be second in that. But we were lucky to have the staff that we have in this city. They care about this city, and it shows in their work ethic. Other than that, since we won't have a meeting in December, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year.
Amen.
You covered too much.
Mr. Liberty.
That's what I was trying to say. Happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas. Drive safe. There will be a lot of traffic on the road. Welcome again to Mr. Potts. Looking forward to you helping the city grow. Thank you to Mr. Doyle and his staff. As others have said, you guys make us look good. Thank you.
Mr. Rice.
Yes.
Something else now.
Okay, something else. Well, they got me again on the trash last Thursday, the eleventh. Wasn't expecting to be not running, so just a warning this Thursday, or next Thursday, Thanksgiving. If you are a Thursday trash, it goes to Wednesday, and Friday stays the same. So, watch that. And I'm going to thank the city employees of Waynesville. The streets look great downtown with the Christmas decorations. Drove through there the other night, and they look really nice, so let's thank them.
Mr. Curtis. Since we're not having a meeting next month, Christmas, all I'm hearing is delay shipment. You may not get your presents. They're just painting this real rosy picture about Christmas. That's not what it's about, though. Christmas is about your family, getting together, and doing those things. It's not about the shipment. And I'd like to also say about Mr. Doyle, I'm impressed with your leadership skills. I've never heard you take credit for anything that the city does, and I know you're a very humble guy, and you always give credit to your staff, and I appreciate that in you.
Thank you. Before Mr. Wilson, there you go. Learn a craft, make something for your friends, and the Blue Bee would be a great place to learn. Mr. Wilson.
Okay, I want to start by saying, I know this is late, but I want to go back to October thirty-first and say thank you to all of those organizations, the Waynesville City Police Department for the support that they provided down at the park with our drive-through pumpkin fest. It was a great experience, and without them, it would not have been possible. We had over twenty-eight organizations represented out there in the park that was giving away items for free, and they all enjoyed it, and every year it continues to grow. So, I just, without those organizations and all of the volunteers, we could not make that possible for all of our citizens. So, I just wanted to say thank you for everything that was done on that day. Also, thank you for everybody that supported the Veterans Day Parade. It was a great event, and of course, living in the community that we live in that's adjacent to Fort Linnamore, and we have plenty of retirees. We always want to pay homage to our servicemen and women of all branches, and I still want to say thank you for that as well. With this season, I would just say to just spend time with your family, enjoy the time. And it seems like, I just said this a couple of months ago, I'll see you next year, because this year just flew by. But I'm happy to be here, and I do thank the staff for all of the things that you guys do in and out. I mean, I know how it is to work on a staff, and everybody doesn't know everything that you do. You just plan for an event, and it never ends because you're always planning, executing, plan, execute. So, I just want to say thank you for all of the time that you guys put in. And in the same, I say the same thing that Councilman Curtis said. As far as Mr. Doyle, I really appreciate your hard work and your leadership, and I know what team building looks like, and you exemplify that for this organization in bringing the staff together. So, I appreciate that.
Bill, you get almost the last word.
Well, last month, I didn't have much to say, and I guess I'll behave myself tonight and just wish everybody happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas, and stay away from COVID.
Well said.
You know, Ms. Rigsby shows what can be accomplished in a hundred years. A lot of us never do a third of what she accomplished that time. She sets a great example, as Amanda said, and I think more people would step up and try to emulate a person like that. That being said, filing for city council starts December the seventh, so we'll welcome anybody that wants to file for city council. Thank you very much, and very adjourned.